Hi, everybody, and welcome to ZTV Live. Today is Wednesday, June 10th, and I'm so happy to have you here. Tonight, our guest host Alexandria Councilwoman Amy Jackson is back with an episode of Titan Talk, welcoming her fellow T.C. Williams graduate Melissa Poritz-Riddy, who's the Director of Eastern Regional Government and Community Relations at Inova Health System. Stay tuned and hear these former Titans discuss what's going on with current hospital, health, and community issues. Tomorrow night, we'll hear from Leslie Hall of Delray Artisans with an insider's look at the current extended exhibit, Tell Me a Story, which has become a story in and of itself. I hope you'll join us tomorrow night. But before we get to Amy and Melissa, I'd like you to know that tonight's edition of ZTV Live is brought to you in part by The Italian Place on White Street in Old Town. This woman-owned small business is where you want to place an order for your favorite authentic Italian specialties like pizza, pasta dishes, fresh Italian subs, and Italian wines. Visit theitalianplace.com and see their dinner specials, pizza kits, and more, and mention the zebra for 15% off your order. Tonight's show is also brought to you by Cafe 44 on the Potomac River in North Old Town. This stylish American eatery offers a spectacular view from its dining balcony, delicious food, and a warm and welcoming staff. Check out the menu online at cafe44.com or download the mobile app for even easier ordering. Mention the zebra for $4.00 off curbside cocktails. ZTV Live is also sponsored by Tempo Restaurant, Alexandria's best-kept secret on Duke Street and the West End. Specializing in northern Italian and French cuisine, award-winning Tempo is well-known for its delectable seafood and tantalizing desserts. Visit temporestaurant.com to see their menu, including beer and wine to go. Mention the zebra for 10% off meals on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We thank our sponsors for their support. If you'd like to sponsor ZTV Live, please let us know by sending an email to editor@thezebra.org or sending us a private message on our Facebook page. In local news today, Governor Ralph Northam announced Northern Virginia and Richmond will move to the next phase of shutdown recovery starting Friday, June 12th, as data shows the novel coronavirus appears to be slowing its spread across the region. The looser restrictions include opening restaurants for indoor dining at half-capacity and allowing gyms and fitness centers to reopen indoors at 30% capacity. The maximum number of individuals permitted in a social gathering will increase from 10 to 50 people. Please continue to wear a face mask, maintain physical distance, and stay home if you are high-risk or if you're experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. Starting Monday, June 15th, the Alexandria Library begins curbside pickup for library materials that are currently on hold at each of its locations. Curbside hours are between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and 11:00 to 6:00 on Wednesday. Staff will not be accepting returned materials, donations, payments, or answering questions during the curbside service. Alexandria City Public Schools is working to put plans in place to reopen schools safely in the fall. If the city and Northern Virginia are fully open at that stage, students and staff will see little difference in the day-to-day operations of the school. However, ACPS is planning on developing contingency plans in case that situation changes. Stay tuned for more details as they're confirmed. And finally, T.C. Williams graduation will take place this Saturday morning, June 13th. The Class of 2020 will graduate in a virtual ceremony that begins at 9:30 a.m. You can watch the ceremony on the Class of 2020 website, on the ACPS Facebook page, and on the ACPS TV cable channel 71 in Alexandria. During the ceremony, feel free to share your photos of your decorated cap on Twitter and Facebook. Use hashtags #TCW2020 and #TitansRising to connect with ACPS. And later that night, Saturday, June 13th, everyone in the city is encouraged to join the celebration in the Light Up Alexandria event. Show off the Titan colors of red, white, and blue on Saturday night for the T.C. Williams graduation. Don't forget to illuminate your own home as well. The George Washington Masonic Temple will be lit in honor of our graduates. Stop by and see it, making sure, of course, to observe social distancing. And now, I'll bring on our guest Amy Jackson and her guest Melissa Poritz-Riddy.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm excited to see you. First, I want to thank ZTV, The Zebra Press. Susan, thank you again for having us again tonight. I'm so excited. I get to speak with Melissa Riddy tonight, who I know we've had some conversations, we've had some intersections in life, especially right now. I want to say that Melissa is the Director of the Eastern Region Government and Community Relations of Inova Hospital. So, we welcome you, Melissa. Thank you for being here. I'm excited for our conversation, and of course, she wouldn't be here unless she was a Titan. So, I'm really excited to have the conversation tonight. We have a lot of community things to talk about. We have some updates to talk about concerning Inova. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And I think what we'll start with, of course, is why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? And then, we'll have a good jumping-off point from there about a lot of questions.
Sure. Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate being asked. It's exciting. So, I grew up in Alexandria. I went to Douglas and MacArthur, and then GW Middle School, and then T.C. Williams. And so, I grew up on the West End, and now I live in Rosemont. And so, I did, I went to college in North Carolina, and then I traveled to England, where I met my husband, and then brought him back to good old Alexandria, Virginia, to start our life here and our family. So, we live in Rosemont, and we have a rising kindergartner, hopefully, and a rising third grader. So, you know, we love living in Alexandria. I love, you know, walking the same streets and going to some of the same restaurants with my family that I did when I was a kid with my family. My brother still lives in Alexandria. My sister and my parents now live in Delaware, but they come back to visit. So, we're really just kind of like a homegrown family that loves staying local.
Well, we love that you're here. And of course, because of that, there's probably a little bit more of an investment, especially right now, as these situations crop up. Of course, we're in a pandemic. I don't want to get into the weeds about the Inova details, but if you could just take a minute and just kind of update us concerning, you know, your role especially. I know what you didn't bring up, which I want to say is, you know, you had quite a career in the Communications Department of our city government, which is a huge role for marketing, for relating to our community, for getting the word out about everything. So, how did you, I guess, a few questions. How did you evolve, right, from here and being, and I know you didn't mention what your father did in your, but I know you are one of the judge's daughters, so you have infiltrated. I can't even imagine being a child of a judge that that person would have kicked me to the curb long ago if that would happen, but.
Yeah, the daughter of a judge, but also a teacher as well.
There you go. So, the balance is there.
Well, as firm as you think the judge might have been, the teacher was actually much firmer, so.
Well, that's what happens in our house. I seem to be the way, you know, there's a father that, you know, he's got the bigger bark, and then the kids know, yeah, but mommy's the one that's going to follow through, so don't mess with that.
Now, it's actually interesting that you bring up my parents, because my dad, both my parents grew up in Alexandria. My dad went to Hammond High School when it was a Hammond, and my mom went to GW. So, we really are an Alexandria family. They met, actually, when my dad was at the University of Virginia, but our families knew each other. We're Jewish, so the Jewish community in Alexandria is very tight, and so they knew each other through Temple Bethel and through the other synagogues. So, yeah, so we've kind of just been some long Alexandria families. So, back to my career, we, after I got back, I moved to London and met my husband, and after kind of having a good time over there for a while, I decided to move back. And after a while, got a job with the City of Alexandria and was so fortunate to spend almost 14 years with the city. First, with the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Activities. I got to run all of the camps for the city and then all of the fee-based programs. And it was actually exciting, because when I was in college, I was a summer camp counselor at Camp Chincopin. And then, my first full-time job at the city was running the camps at Chincopin. So, it really was full circle to come back and give back to my community, and that is something that I've always tried to do in my career and make it, have a focus on really giving back to Alexandria and being part of this community. So, after almost eight years, seven, eight years with the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Activities, I was fortunate enough to be able to make the move to the Office of Communications and Public Information. And that was just such a learning experience. You really, in that job, in that office, you really have an opportunity to be what I refer to as a mile wide but an inch deep. So, you really get to know a little bit about everything, and it's really exciting, especially for someone like me who's generally nosey, so, or inquisitive. It's really interesting to have one conversation about stormwater and then talk about the police, and then talk about social services and recreation programs. The city has over 400 lines of businesses, and you have to know a little bit about everything. And I just thought it was absolutely fascinating. Every day was very different, and every day was a learning experience, because the city, as you know, Councilwoman, does so many different things all the time. And so, it was a wonderful, wonderful job. I loved working for Craig Pfeiffer, the Communications Director, you know, for marketing and the council, and it was just wonderful. And then, an opportunity arose to, for the Inova position. And after, I honestly thought I would work for the City of Alexandria forever. I considered myself a lifer, because I loved it. But this opportunity came up. A friend from graduate school told me about the position and said, you'd be perfect for it. And I always knew that the only way I would leave city government was for another position that also gave back to the city. And this was an opportunity to do something new and work for a health system that I was born in. I was born in Alexandria Hospital and had my two babies at Alexandria Hospital, and now I work in Alexandria Hospital. So, it was actually a nice little full-circle story there. But, you know, it was hard to leave the city, and I miss my colleagues, and they are still doing wonderful, wonderful work there, but I'm still in touch with them, and I still work with them all the time. I got a call from someone in the Budget Office today, and I was at a city council, virtual city council hearing last night, so.
That's great.
So, working with the city to form a partnership and create and maintain a wonderful partnership with the Inova Health System is really, really important. Community health is so important, especially now. Inova does a ton of community programs for our population health. Even before COVID, we had diabetes programs and Juniper program, which is our HIV program, all free of charge. We have the Inova Cares Clinic for Families, which is a primary care home for people with Medicaid, but also people who can't afford or uninsured. And that was always there for them. And now, during the time of COVID, it's even more important, because those clinics are providing free assessments and testing to anyone in need. And it's just so important for us to be a partner in this pandemic with the Health Department and the city and all of our other partners in the state. We're also really fortunate, you know, I don't know if you know, but Alexandria Hospital, Inova Alexandria Hospital, there were times that we were the second busiest hospital in the state with COVID patients. And this team there, the staff, we call it Inova, we call our employees team members, and it's always been a true statement, but even so, during this pandemic, it's proved to be even more true, because surely it takes a team to run a hospital like that during the best of times. But, right now, we talk a lot about doctors and nurses, but there are heroes behind the heroes, right? There are engineers and the people cleaning. I mean, there are people that build negative pressure rooms overnight. I mean, it's absolutely amazing, the support services and the engineering and the biotech folks. I mean, it is truly a team effort. But we are really fortunate in Alexandria, with Inova Alexandria, that we're part of a health system. So, we were able, when the pandemic, when we saw the pandemic coming from far, far away, we set up a command center, a coordination center at our ICPH campus with some of the smartest people, and they watched it, and they planned, and they did surge planning and PPE planning, and really got us to a good, good place before it hit us, before our surge hit. And we were prepared, and we are prepared, and we remain prepared. But because we're part of a system, we don't have to talk in a silo just about Alexandria Hospital, because we have five hospitals in our system. And so, we don't have to talk about how many ventilators we have at Alexandria, because we have a system of care. How many doctors? We can transfer patients, we can transfer clinicians if we need. So, we are really fortunate in the Northern Virginia area to have this, what we like to refer to as seamless system of care. That was a mouthful, Amy.
You did a great job. I'm trying to keep up with the questions ahead. No, Melissa, that was amazing. And, you know, I got to tell you, me, as I'm sure everybody here in Alexandria, we are so proud of the team members at Inova. And also, I mean, you know, I can't even imagine. I never wanted to be a nurse or a doctor. That just wasn't something I was interested in, let alone EMTs or emergency personnel that has to, you know, in the ambulance, in the fire engines, you know, go pick up the people to bring them to the hospital. And I just, it floors me, the amount of energy and expertise and just keeping yourself composed during this time of crisis in Alexandria and everywhere in our nation. So, again, I know I speak for me and my family, and I'm sure I speak for a lot of residents, if not all of them, that we are so proud of having you, having Inova here and the care that they give. And honestly, you know, because I know, you know, I know I'm competitive, and I've said that before, and I know you're probably a little bit competitive. So, you know, and you want to be the best, and you want to be on the best team, and you want things to get done, and you want them done correctly and efficiently and effectively and now, right? And I've seen that. That is what Inova Alexandria has brought. And I can only think, you know, to go back to my own career and my own educational experience, always in a school, in a school system, it is top-down leadership. So, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to Dr. Rena Benzel and the rest of the team there that has come together as a team throughout the region, throughout the system, and come with this expertise and this vision of how they were going to get through this pandemic and come out the other side, hopefully saying, okay, well, these are the numbers, and of course, we've had positive results, we've had, you know, fatalities, but it could have been worse. So, can you speak to that in terms of our leadership and what the other side, the light at the end of the tunnel is here?
Yeah, so, I feel very fortunate. My role is the Eastern Region of Inova, which is Alexandria Hospital, but also Inova Mount Vernon Hospital, which is also is a wonderful facility and was also hit by the COVID pandemic, of course, and are handling it so well, and their team is wonderful. But to speak specifically about Inova Alexandria, Dr. Rena Benzel is the president, and I don't know how else to describe her except for she is just boss. Like, she is just, she dazzles me. She is so smart and compassionate, and not only clinically she can speak, I mean, she's a doctor and she has her MBA. I mean, she's just impressive beyond words, but she's a leader. And that is really, I think, the difference between a manager and a leader, right? She leads. She feels the feels with her team, and she acknowledges how they feel. I mean, she would get on, we have a meeting every morning called Huddle. Well, there's many of them, but there's, and she says, you know, I know this is scary, and I know this is hard, and we're in this together, and I'm with you. And she has done town halls, where she has made herself available. And, you know, we have a wonderful Chief Medical Officer and a Chief Nursing Officer and is Head of Ambulatory Services. I mean, we really, at Inova Alexandria, have this amazing team of men and women that we should be so proud of. And then, as a system, we're very fortunate that we have all these smart, dedicated folks at our hospitals, but then we have a system of people as well. Our CEO, Dr. Stephen Jones, is extremely amazing and has led us through this charge and done some wonderful things. He releases videos to the community, but also to team members regularly to give us updates. Our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Steve Motu, has been amazing, and he sends out Huddle messages, just keeping team members abreast of what is going on internally and externally. You know, the thing with COVID, as everyone knows, and I am definitely not a clinician, but it changes. We learn new things every single day. So, communications is key during this time, and Inova has done a really good job keeping team members abreast of the latest of what is going on. And also, you know, we also have, you know, our Employee Assistance Program, and we have clergy services. We have a lot going on, a lot of support for team members, because this is hard. This is really hard. But they are rising to the challenge, and they are doing a wonderful job.
Well, I'm so glad to hear that. As we are continuing, again, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and there are other things on the horizon for Inova, of course. I mean, we've heard the murmurs, the rumblings of down in Springfield, that they're going to probably move, or, I shouldn't say, that health plex, I believe, where they are now located down off of, was it Buella?
Buella.
Buella. And Walker Lane, that may turn into an actual hospital, if I'm not mistaken. But here in Alexandria, we're also looking at a health plex similar to what they have down there on Walker Lane and on Buella in the Fairfax County region. We're looking at that here at Oakville Triangle, right? Could you maybe go into some detail about that, if it's not like top secret and we're all going to have it?
Oh, no, no. All right. So, as you know, with the pandemic, we had to stop elective surgeries. So, we are, so there's a couple of things, I will get to your question, but there's a couple of things I want to touch on first, which relates. But we are doing elective surgeries now, and what we really want the community to focus on is that the hospital is safe. We have seen a 50% reduction in stroke and heart patients come into our emergency room, and that's a problem, because people are still having heart attacks and strokes, but people are scared to come to the hospital. So, we've launched a new campaign called Safe at Inova, and it's on our website, and we talk about all of our procedures and protocols on how we're keeping our community, our patients, and our team members safe. It talks about cleaning and a whole host of other topics. So, I urge anyone to go visit that. The hospital is safe. We need people, if they are sick, to come back. Please don't be scared to come to the hospital. So, I had to put that out there.
That's a really good point, because a lot of people are concerned about exactly that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, continue. I didn't think to interrupt, but that was an excellent point.
So, as far as Inova, so Inova's focused, we are focused on regions, and like I said, I'm the Director of the East Region, and I have a counterpart in the Central Region and the Western Region. Central Region, mostly our Fairfax campus, and the Western Region is Fair Oaks and Loudon. And so, we've really focused over the past year doing assessments of our Eastern Region, which is Alexandria, Mount Vernon, the Springfield, and Lorton Health Plex. And based on what we see as the healthcare needs of the community, we are building a health plex in Oakville Triangle, and that is across from Potomac Yards. We are working with the developer Stonebridge, and we're working with the city, and I have, we have regular meetings, it is, you know, it is still happening. And so, we will be building a four-story health plex there. And what that is, a health plex, like you said, the one we already have in Springfield, is a freestanding emergency department, a full-service emergency department, which means you can get, there's a radiology, so you can come in and you can get your, an x-ray done, and it's very full service. And then, we'll also have medical office buildings on top and some ambulatory outpatient surgery as well. Exactly, exactly what's going to be there is still to be determined, but we are in the process, and we are really excited about working with that growing community down there, as we know it is booming there. And then, we just recently announced that we will be building a hospital adjacent to what is currently our Springfield Health Plex, Springfield Van Clonie Health Plex. The land became available, and we purchased it, and so, we are going to build a hospital there as well. But the point of, one of the reasons this hospital, the location of this hospital is important to our Eastern Region is because it will actually relieve Fairfax Hospital. Fairfax Emergency Room can get extremely busy. And so, you know, think about if you're coming down 95 and you hit the mixing bowl, what do you do? Do you take, you know, if you're coming towards DC, if you're going north, do you go left to go to Fairfax, or do you go right? And so, what we are trying to do is alleviate some of those folks going to Fairfax and give them an opportunity to go right and to build a hospital there. Now, exactly what that hospital looks like is still to be determined. We're at very early stages of building, but also programming, but we wanted to get the word out that, you know, even during this pandemic, what we've realized is that we have to care for our community, and it is important to plan for that, because hopefully COVID won't be around forever, but healthcare will, and we need to take care of our community now more than ever. So, we're very excited about it, and it is in Fairfax County, but just like Alexandria, there will be a community process to the whole, you know, to the whole hospital. So, we encourage the community to get involved and speak up and provide input.
Thank you. That is wonderful news. I know, on a personal note, I know, you know, and I will never forget it, because it was so traumatic for me. I must have been 25, I was late, I was probably mid to late 20s, and I had an excruciating earache, and I was living in Annandale. Honestly, I was living in Annandale, but of course, I knew Alexandria Hospital. I went to Fairfax first, and they said, I mean, it was, like, it was, I mean, and of course, everybody that's having a heart attack or anything, you know, you're taking them first. So, soon as I walked in, I looked at the emergency room, and I went, there is, and I walked up to them, I said, this is what's happening with me, how long's the wait? And they're like, you're going to be, I was like, don't even sign me up. I got back in my car, I went to Alexandria. Seriously, it was perfect, right? That particular time of night, everything worked for me coming to, coming home. So, but that's exactly why, I totally agree with you. Springfield will take some of the, I mean, I have both of my children at Inova Fairfax because of the NICU, the, and I see, you know, that unit, just to make sure that if my children, you know, that I was an older mom, so I wanted to make sure that everything was in place, if anything happened, because I was an older mom having these kids. And of course, everything was fine, but again, these are the specialties that a lot of different hospitals within the system have, right? So, and we're, so we're also looking at that, just because Springfield is being built that won't take away necessarily from Alexandria here, from Fairfax over there, from Mount Vernon, because I'm sure they will all have specialties of some kind. Would you, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, what, Inova is basically broken down into service lines, and so, think of it as like a city department. So, it's like brain, cancer, musculoskeletal, and there are service line leads at the top of the system, and then they run through each hospital. So, it doesn't, it means that you might not have So it doesn't, it means that you might not have every service line at every hospital, but you will have it in your system. Because you really want to put the smartest with the smart, right? Like the best with the best. You put your best muscular skeletal people with them, the best cancer people. And we have Schar Cancer and it is an amazing program. Um, so, but we do have cancer services at Alexandria too, and that's part of the Schar Cancer Program. So, um, yeah, so that, that's what we do. For instance, Mount Vernon Hospital is a destination hospital for joints and rehab. It is one of the best in the, the region, um, in the country. It is really a destination for that. Um, and I know my cousin had a surgery there, there. So it is, is wonderful hospital. So it doesn't take away from anything to your point that every hospital will have general hospital care, of course, an emergency room, but there might be specialties at each service of, of our service lines. Um, and I do want to speak to Alexandria Hospital. This Springfield Hospital is not replacing Alexandria Hospital. We are still assessing the best way forward with Alexandria Hospital, whether it is to stay in place or move somewhere else. Uh, so I just want to make it really clear that Springfield Hospital is not replacing Alexandria Hospital, nor is the Oakville Health Plex.
Right. So. Nip that in the bud right now. Thank you. I appreciate that because you know, I couldn't say it. Okay, so. So, but just one more point about the health plex over at Potomac Yard. Because Virginia Tech will have also some housing there as well as being right on a Potomac Yard metro stop. I believe that that will also be, be a very valuable asset in that part of the city. So they don't have to come Central City or, or somewhere else to get their healthcare if they are needing it right then and there, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, just the booming area of the Potomac Yard area, Virginia Tech, Amazon, it's just, uh, another entry point. It's another access point for healthcare, which is really, um, very important. Um, and for, for our community, it's very important. So we have, you know, we, Virginia Tech knows we're coming. Uh, you know, we're really excited to work with the community and form new partnerships as we move forward with this development.
Well, that's, we're happy to hear that and we're happy to have you, obviously, Inova. Um, so here's a question. With, with all of this going on, of course, all of these partnerships, uh, you know, we, we are so used to just saying, oh, the, here's the hospital. If you need anything in an emergency, if you need surgery, if you, that's what you go to the hospital for, right? But what else does Inova do in the community that they give back? That they, they are part of the community and not only is it for people to come um, that are sick or infected or have any issues with, with anything, whether it's, it's surgeries that have been scheduled or just, uh, uh, illnesses come on quickly. That's what they are there for, but they also give back to our community in other ways. Would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I mean, we are a nonprofit health system and a community hospital. So being a part of the community is, is very important to Inova and serving our community. Um, I think I spoke earlier to the safety net programs that we have for our underserved, which are extremely important, important. Um, uh, for us to provide and it's something that we will always provide and we are committed to provide. But also, one of the, the, one of the, some of the roles that I have are to be, um, to represent Inova on different boards. I'm on the healthcare advisory board. I'm part of the, um, you know, um, we do things with, Dr. Bansil's on the senior services board. We try to sponsor different events. We're sponsors of the Chamber, the Valor Awards, 40 Under 40. It's really important for us to be a good neighbor, um, one, and just a, a good member of this community and to give back. We, uh, promote, uh, the Scholarship Fund for Alexandria. Uh, we just feel what, that to be, we are one of the biggest, um, employers in the city too. So it is very important for us to give back and to be a part of the city, have a voice and to know that we are in conversations and that people know that they can rely on us. So that is actually a really fun part of my job, that I get to sit on different boards and commissions and go to different meetings and, you know, meet with the health department and figure out ways that we can do things together and different programs. It's really fun and I think it, it's, it, it works well with my background with the city where I get to see all my own colleagues and figure out ways to, you know, to, to work together. So we do try to be a good partner in the, in healthcare. So, uh, you know, working with our Department of Community and Human Services and like I said, our health department. It's really important. We worked, uh, with our Office of Communications and Public Information to get some word out about some of our programs. Uh, you know, I gotta pl- put in a plug for my old peeps. Uh, so, uh.
They'll appreciate that.
Yeah, they've done a tremendous job. I have to say that I think that the communications that have come out of the city um, is absolutely wonderful. I just have to give it to, to all of the hardworking, uh, employees, uh, staff over at the city because I do think that they are doing an amazing job with the COVID communications. It is, it is, it is amazing to watch and I've enjoyed it.
I agree, I agree. And of course, I know, I know, I, well, I'll, I'll announce it that, of course, we're starting, uh, reopening of the city. We're gonna go into phase two on Friday. And so that will, that will, uh, open a whole other, we'll be able to gather up to 50, I believe. The CDC has, uh, has said that the restrictions on playgrounds are, are going to be, are mitigated at that point. Um, a lot, a lot of other things are gonna start happening. Now, we've alre- already seen uh, Lower King Street booming, you know, hopefully people, you know, stop the spread, wear your mask, still social distance, the COVID-19 virus is still out there, be careful. Um, but we're starting to see a reopening and I think everybody is feeling relieved. I think everyone is feeling like, okay, life continues. Again, the light at the end of the tunnel. We, we're almost there. Um, I know we have to be still cautious and suspicious about, okay, two weeks from now. Hopefully, we're all okay, you know, as, as we are going out and, and living our lives again normally. Now, that being said, okay, so I, I have two small children that I know, there is no summer camp. We are finishing up a school year that, that none of us have seen and the kids have been very resilient and don't really understand that, they understand that it's been different, but they still understand that it is, you know, they have to show up to their Zoom classes and they have to have remediation with their teachers, whether it's reading or math. And these are of course, small children. These are not middle school or high school children. So how, how are you dealing? Because I know you also have small children, as you just discussed. You know, this is where a lot of us in Alexandria, you know, there's, there's, there's different factions here, right? You have the singles, you have married but no children. You have those that have lost jobs. You have those that have been teleworking the whole time. You, you know, there's, there's, it's very difficult to balance. And of course, a lot of people, you're either stressed because you're trying to work at home with children, um, as, as the case is here in this house, but there's also a whole other faction that ha- you have no childcare, they're not at school, you've lost your job, you don't have money to pay the rent. You know, it is a divide, right? So how, how do you see going forward? You know, what is the good news about this? And how are you handling it, um, being, you know, you're, you're the voice of Inova and yet how are you dealing with the school-aged children in your house?
Yeah, um, it's, I, you know, I, I did not realize taking a job in, in healthcare that this is gonna happen. Uh, and, uh, it is.
No one knew it was gonna happen.
No one knew it's gonna happen.
No one knew.
Um, you know, this pandemic i- is showing the inequities of, of everything, you know, of, of people and it is absolutely heartbreaking and disturbing. And, um, I'm hopeful that, uh, things will change. Um, but it has, you know, I have not, I went to, uh, my office yesterday for the first time since March. Uh, and, uh, it was wonderful. I was so happy to be in my office. Uh, um, but yeah, I mean, it's tough. I, I feel, both my husband and I are working from home. We feel really fortunate that we're one, still employed. Uh, we have a, like I said, a five and an eight-year-old and it, and it's, it's challenging. Uh, you know, it's hard to manage the Zoom calls and the work and figuring it all out. But I also just, you know, my heart breaks when my mom, when my five-year-old says in her little voice, like, when the virus is over, maybe I'll go to kindergarten. I mean, it is heartbreaking. Um, or she says things like, Mom, you're always on calls. Um, you know, come play with me. Or I say, but I have another, I have a call and she's like, another one? I mean, it is really heartbreaking, but, um, all in all, we're, we're really fortunate that we have, um, you know, we have each other, we are employed. Um, we have great neighbors. Uh, at the very beginning of this, we kind of socially co-horted with, uh, a neighbor next door and we kind of said, we're in this together. And that has been really great because we have kids and, uh, you know, there are times where, well, my kids are there now. Um, and so there are times where we, I take theirs and they take ours and we're still able to have dinner with people. Um, you know, so it's really, uh, it's been tough. I mean, I think for everyone, every, it's been different and tough. But in general, I consider myself very lucky. Um, but there also have been things that I've enjoyed. I have enjoyed weekends with nothing to do. Uh, there's been a lot more time sitting on our porch. We got a dog, like we, as everyone did, we got a corona dog. Um, and I never thought that would happen and she's adorable. Uh, so, you know, things like that, that I was always too busy or couldn't do. I'm trying to slow down a little bit and do a little bit more. Lots of bike rides, lots of walks. Um, you know, a little bit looser on the, um, bedtime, you know, lots of movie nights. It's, it's been, there have been some really heartwarming moments in all of this. And, um, I try to see that, the good side of that. Um, good friends as well, lots of Zoom calls, uh, some walks around the neighborhood. I feel really fortunate. I have really great friends. I have really great neighbors. Um, so, you know, i- it's, it's, we're gonna get through it, right? We gotta. And you know, I'm just like everybody else, that there is a light at the end of the tunnel of some sort. I mean, I don't think normal is gonna, I mean, everyone says the new normal, right? And, um, you know, from a hospital perspective, we are continuing to plan and continuing to prepare because we don't know what's gonna happen. And we are monitoring every single second of every single day and we still have a coordination center. This is not over for us. People are still in the hospital and still in critical care. So as the country and the state and the city are ready to move on, we are still very knee-deep in this with six sick people. And so we want people to remember that although things are opening, please continue to social distance and wash your hands and be careful because this is a very serious disease and we want to slow the spread even more. So although it seems like it's over, it really isn't. So we just want people to continue to listen to their advice. We will not, you know, we don't want to be, we are not the people giving advice, but we are the people listening. And so we want people to follow, you know, our state and local government rules and the CDC and just please be smart and listen.
Absolutely. Thank you. Because a lot of those things also, I mean, we've heard them over and over and over again, but they are so worth repeating because people may think, okay, that we're allowed to go downtown, we're allowed to go be with 50 other people. And you just go, okay, but wait, don't, don't forget, these things still have to be done so that we can continue to do that and not, you know, I don't want to go backwards, nobody does. But the other things that you were bringing up concerning the children and being outside, all of those are also just to, just to help with mental health. A- as well as the children, I'm hearing, I'm, I hear that all the time here too. We, we are, you know, as soon as, you know, oh, you have another meeting tonight? It's like, yes, yes. And then they're in the other room, you know, if it's a council meeting, they're in the other room on channel 7, be watching. I'm like, oh. It's, it's quite an interesting setup. It's quite an interesting setup. But again, I'm very thankful that we, we are in a community that cares for each other and we have resilient children, uh, that are able to bounce back. And, and that is, that is what I'm the most thankful for and grateful for because if we don't have that, it's, it will be a longer road. Okay, so I, I have a final last question for you. I mean, we could keep talking. I'm sure, I'm sure Susan and everybody else at the Z are like, oh, oh. But, so, you know, this is where, this is the part of the time, I, I seem to ask this question probably of pretty much everybody. But, you know, when, when I bring on alumni of our, of our local high school, public high school, right? I, I just, I, I went to Patrick Henry, the old Patrick Henry, and Hammond and TC. My, my kids will now be going from MacArthur to the, to, they're so excited. They're gonna go to the school. Mommy went to the school. I'm like, yeah, it's probably not like, yeah, prob- it's, it's a, it's a stand-in. That's it. So, but, you know, then, then we go away. We go, you know, if we're lucky, we go to college or we take trade jobs or we, you know, we go explore. And then there's an age, and I won't say that age, but all of a sudden we start, we start kind of coming home, right? So some, some don't leave, you know, and they're here and that's awesome. Um, and then, uh, but I know a lot of people that just come back and their roots start again, you know, or continue on. So how, how, if looking back, you know, in, and, and not know, you know, you didn't have a crystal ball back in the day, right? Um, how has, how has this transcended in your life from what you have learned here at, in Alexandria? You know, going to TC, how did it help you? What were you involved in that then you see, this is where I am right now? So can you, can you speak to that? So I, I think of all the seniors right now that, right? They don't, they, you know, we just had a graduation. It was an entire neighborhood. Um, it, it wasn't just TC grads. We had all ages of grads. If they were going into middle school, if they were going into high school, um, finishing elementary, if they, you know, if any of the private schools here, we had and even, you know, those that got MBAs and, and other degrees, you know, finished their graduate school of college. But there, so there were like 10, 11, I think, graduates in this parade of a, of a neighborhood parade that this is what everyone's putting on, right? You know, get them in the cars and have the. So, you know, it's different, but this is, the, the grads this year don't have, you know, the normal end of year sequence, right? They don't get the celebrations normally. This is their normal. Um, so how, how do you see where you've come from to where you are now?
Yeah, I mean, my heart breaks for anyone that's graduating right now. I mean, my, uh, youngest just graduated from Abercadabra preschool and that didn't, you know, that didn't happen.
Mine went, but we didn't have that.
Yeah, so, um, but you know, I fondly remember my graduation from TC. But when I think about TC, it's not graduation that meant the most. It's the experience that I had there. So what I would say to those seniors is that, that be thankful that you had that experience. TC is such a special place. It is such a, uh, a place where you learn real life and you learn the joy of diversity and you enjoy so many people and so many things. And it is really, really special. And that will carry you, those three years are what's gonna carry you and teach you through the rest of your life. Not that one graduation ceremony that you missed. Um, you got what was meant for you to get from TC. And it is really unfortunate that you didn't get that final hurrah, but you got what you needed. Um, because that is what, is what has kept with me, with my friends. Some of my best friends still, like you said, came back to Alexandria or Arlington or they're close by. And they left and they came back and we are still best friends. My best friends are still my high school friends. Even some that live in different places, we're still close. There is something about TC that bonds us and, um, it is a special, special place. Um, so, you know, I feel so fortunate that I went there, had the experiences that I had, uh, met the people that I had, had the teachers who I had, um, and just got to grow up those formative years in that TC community. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I think that it's a really special place and Alexandria is a really special place. So as I, you know, moved. So as I, you know, moved and went to school and moved to England, you know, this is home and it'll always be home. And it's always the place that I want to be a part of the community and give back because I feel like I got so much from the community that it, now it's my turn to give back.
Thank you. That is the perfect ending to this conversation. I won't add any more other than I totally agree with everything you just said concerning. No, seriously, Melissa, I really appreciate you spending time with us tonight. This was, this was a great conversation and I hope everybody that was listening in and continues to listen in as they watch later. You know, the takeaway here is, one, we have a wonderful hospital system that's doing great things and, you know, our, our team members at Inova, our health, our frontline healthcare workers, they, they have put their own lives on the line this, you know, the last three or four months to make sure that we are okay as a community and we're going to be okay as a society. And I, I appreciate that you're able to communicate all that to us in your position with Inova and then just you being part of our community, that, that's, you know, I couldn't ask for more because that's exactly what we want is, we want the people that grew up here and, and newcomers, of course, but we want that, we want that part of the community. Want, we want people to be part of the community and continue to give back to the community. So we appreciate all you do, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Susan, you wanna?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi.
I'm here, hi.
All right.
Amy and Melissa, what a, what a fantastic conversation. I'll, I'll, I'll thank you both for the community service that you guys both are doing. And it's really great to hear about your traveling the world and then, you know, kind of coming back to home. I grew up in New Jersey, it's a very similar situation. Of course, this is our new home, I've been here for 21 years, but I could see my children having that same connection. It's just such a wonderful area here and Alexandria especially, just, there's a real camaraderie and a community in Alexandria that you just don't find in a lot of cities. So I'm a, it's not my native city, but I absolutely feel like it's home here to us now. So I, again, thank you both for your service. Melissa, what a wonderful detailed snapshot you've given us of, of everything Inova is doing and the exciting plans coming forward. So we'll all keep an eye, be sure to keep an eye on that. So Amy, thanks again for your wonderful segments here and we will look forward to the next time you come on with your next guest.
Thank you, thank you for having us, Susan. And, and I appreciate, of course, I gotta say a shout out to David McClure in the back of this now as our executive producer. But I, yes, thank you all, always enjoy coming here.
Terrific. Okay, well, that's going to wrap us up tonight for ZTV Live. I will echo Amy's sentiments and say thank you, David McClure, our executive producer. And please tune in tomorrow night at 7 o'clock when we're going to welcome Leslie Hall from Delray Artisans. He'll be here to talk about some of the exhibits going on and some good news for that gallery coming up soon. Also, remember, we were just talking about graduates. If you know a graduate that you'd like to commemorate in the July issue of The Zebra, it's a $75 ad, which is about 50% off what it normally costs. But please think about placing an ad for your graduate with a photo and some text to commemorate this special graduation and kind of a crazy year for them. The deadline for those ads is June 19th for the July issue. So please go ahead and go onto our Facebook page and look for the flyer or send an email to, I believe it's ads@thezebrapress.org or send a message on our Facebook page and we will get you set up for that. And that's going to wrap it up for everybody here tonight at ZTV Live. And thanks so much for tuning in and remember, as you can, to be the good news in someone's life.